June 17, 2020, Board Meeting to Order and Remind Everyone to Please Mute Your Audio When You're Not Speaking, As Well As Be Sure To State Your Name Prior To Making A Comment, Or A Motion, Or A Second On An Action Item. I Thank You. I'll Ask That Each Commissioner Please Respond With A "Here" When I Call Out Your Name. Commissioner Doan?
Here.
Thank You. Commissioner Duggan?
Here.
Thank You. Commissioner Sanders?
Here.
Thank You. Commissioner Schmidt?
I'm Here.
I See You There. And Commissioner Bagnall, Me, I'm Here As Well. So Let's Get Started With This Meeting And We Will Begin With The Reports By The CEO And Management Staff.
Thank You, President Bagnell, And I Will Pull Up My Notes Here. So The First Item, Portland Crypto-Spiridium Results For The Month Of May 2020. The Portland Water Bureau Reported No Crypto-Spiridium Osis Detentions In Water Samples Collected From The Bull Run Headworks. Additional Details May Be Found At The www portland oregon.gov/water/crypto results. In Terms Of The Ongoing COVID Response, COVID-19, TVWD Is Working Towards A Partial Or Limited Reopening. Staff Is In The Process Of Finalizing The District's Reopening And Exposure Control Plans. Significant Work Has Already Been Taken To Encourage Social Distancing Within The Building. Limited Occupancy Signs Have Been Posted In Offices And Conference Rooms, And Inbox Has Been Relocated Outside Cubicle Offices. Floor Markings Have Been Affixed To Note Six Feet Of Separation, All In An Effort To Reduce COVID-19 Exposure. The Communications Team Has Been Working On A Training Video To Educate Staff On The New Safety Measures. So And I Am One Of The Folks That's In That Video, So If You Get To See It, I Hope You Find It Entertaining.
So I Would Really Like It If You Would Post A Link To That So The Board Can View It, Because Videos I Have Seen In The Past Made By TVWD Staff Have Been Hysterical. Like The, I Don't Know If You've Seen The Totally Valuable Water Dude One? That's One For The Books.
I Haven't, So I Will Make Sure It's Posted. I Did Tell Our Communications Staff I Was Expecting Some Oscar Nominations. We Will Return The Ability, Retain The Ability For Staff To Work From Home Under Our Temporary Work From Home Policy. Each Manager Will Be Working With Their Staff On A Case-by-Case Basis To Address This. The Main Requirement Will Be That We Can Track The Work By The Staff Member To Ensure The Work Is Getting Completed. The Lobby Remodel Continues With An Estimated Completion Date Of The End Of This Month. The New Lobby Will Improve Customer Amenities As Well As Provide A Barrier Which Will Increase Safety And Reduce Risk Of Coronavirus And Other Droplet Transmitted Germs. As Result, We'll Be Able To Open The Front Desk Up To Customers Once This Work Is Complete And Still Maintain The Safety Of Our Employees. The Next Item Is Virtual Board Meeting Participation. As The District Begins To reopen, TVWD Will Eventually Be Able To Return To In-Person Board Meetings, Which Includes Social Distancing And Precautionary Measures. We Can't At This Time Give An Exact Date That We Can Return To In-Person Meetings, But It Will Be Likely Be Prior To A Full Phase 3 Reopening. Unless There Are Objections Due To The Continued Presence Of COVID-19 In Our Community, I'd Like To Continue To Offer Board Members The Opportunity To Participate In Work Sessions, Regular Meetings And Other Meetings Virtually For The Time Being And Until Until There's Really A Comfort Level For Any Individual Board Member To Physically Return.
This Is Dick. I Would Take You Up On That Considering I've Been Immune Compromised Since 2009.
I Appreciate That And That's Exactly What I Was Thinking. I Just Don't See The Need To Expose Board Members At This Point, Or Staff Frankly Unnecessarily If We Can Continue To Be Effective Via Virtual Meetings.
Tom, This Is Jim Doan. I Am In The Group With Dick. Given Blood Type, Diabetes And My Age, According To The CDC, I've Got A 17% Chance Of Dying Should I Get The Virus And I'm Those Are Worse Than The Odds I Had In Vietnam.
I Appreciate That And I Think With That, I'm Going To Suggest That Then I Will Continue The Virtual Board Meetings And I Will Let You Know As We Get Further Along Into Phase 3. But Just Because We Get To Phase 3, I Just Want To Acknowledge That For The Very Reasons Commissioner Doan And Commissioner Schmidt Just Identified That We Still May Want To Continue Doing Virtual Board Meetings Until There's Actually Some Type Of Vaccine Or More Certain Absolute That This Won't Be Transmitted.
Well, Really, You Know, As Much As I Really Do Love Meeting In Person And Find It Easier, I Don't See Any Reason We Should Put Any End Date On Virtual Meetings Because When And If This Whole Thing Ever Ends And Some Of Us With Aggressive Travel Schedules Get Back To Traveling, The Virtual Option Is Pretty Nice.
And That Actually Might Be Something We Are Working On What Options Look Like For More Permanent Policies On Virtual Meetings And Those Kinds Of Things. So Maybe That's Something We Can Actually Talk About With The Board And Incorporate Into The Board Rules That Would Allow This For Future Board Members Possibly To Say, I Want To Attend Virtually.
We Have Had Situations In The Past Where We Needed Commissioners Who Were On Vacation Or Out Of Town For Whatever Reason, Call In For Important Votes, But The Microsoft Teams Meeting Or The Zoom Meetings Are A Much More Robust Platform And Way Easier To Know What's Actually Going On, So I Would Encourage You To Keep After It.
I Will Do So. The Next Thing That I Have Is Annual Board Appointments And There's A List Of Board Appointments. For Fiscal Year 2020, 2021, Board Appointments Are Scheduled To Be Approved In The July Regular Meeting. Attached To The Material We Provided For This Board Meeting, We Have This Current Year's Appointments And The Board Is Asked To Review The Current Appointments And Notify Me If There Is A Desire To Modify. So I Don't Know If There's Any Need To Have A Discussion Tonight About This. This Was To Give The Board A Chance To Take A Look At These. Hopefully You Can Have Some Discussions And Then At The, What I Was Thinking Is At The July Board Meeting, If There's Changes To These, We Could Make Them Then.
That Makes Sense To Me And I Would Just Ask That If Anybody's Got Extreme Heartburn About Their Appointments Or Really Wants A Change, Let Me Know And Don't Do Reply All.
Okay. And Then For The July Work Session, Putting This Out There For The Board To Consider, There Are Only Two Routine Items That We Currently Have For The July 7th Work Session. It's The Normal WWSS Commission Update That Dave Kraska Provides And The TVWD Financial Update That Paul Matthews Has Been Providing. Neither Updates Contains Any Urgent Or Time-Sensitive Information, So I Was Requesting Guidance On Whether Or Not The Board Wishes To Cancel This Work Session.
This Is Jim Doan. I'm In Favor Of Canceling It.
This Is Dick. I Do.
This Is Todd Sanders. I'm Actually Going To Be Out Of Town On July 7th, So It Would Be Fine For Me To Cancel.
You're Just Canceling Yourself. I'm Cool With Canceling. How About You, Commissioner Duggan?
No Objections From Me Either.
Well, Okay Then. That Would Be A Free Evening That None Of Us Anticipated.
Fantastic. So Last Safety Minute And Department Report. Tara Vanderwey, Water Quality Specialist, Will Present The Safety Minute And Department Report This Evening. And With That, I'm Going To Turn It Over To Her.
Can Somebody Approve Me To Take Control Of The Screen?
Tara, You Should Be Able To Just Start Sharing.
Oh, Sorry. It Said Waiting For Approval. My Apologies. Good Evening, President Bagnell And Commissioners. Our Safety Moment For This Evening Is A Reminder From The American Academy Of Dermatology To Protect Your Skin. It's Estimated That One In Five Americans Will Develop Skin Cancer In Their Lifetime. The American Academy Of Dermatology Recommends Everyone Use Sunscreen That Offers The Following: Broad-Spectrum Protection, SPF 30 Or Higher, And Water Resistance. Always Use Your Sunscreen. Even When It's Cloudy, The Sun Emits Harmful UV Rays Year Round And On Cloudy Days, Up To 80% Of The Sun's Harmful UV Rays Can Penetrate Your Skin. Also Remember To Apply Your Sunscreen To Dry Skin 15 Minutes Before Going Outdoors. Science Engineering And Operations Department Report Is Going To Focus On Our Efforts Towards System Water Quality Optimization. Going To Spend A Bit Of Time Talking About The Background Of This Project, Some Data Improvements That Have Been Made Over The Last Couple Of Years To Get Us To Where We Are Today. And Then We Will Spend The Rest Of The Time Focusing On Our Efforts To Model Water Quality In The Distribution System And The Result Of Those Efforts. There's A Lot Of Content To Cover Here, So I Will Do My Best To Move Through It Efficiently Out Of Respect For Your Time. Why Is This Important? First And Foremost, We Want To Provide Our Customers With High-Quality Water. This Involves Improving Overall System Water Quality By Making Targeted Changes To The System. This Is Also An Opportunity For Us To Plan For The Willamette Water Supply System Integration. This Project Allows Us To Test Our Ability To Deliberately Move Water From One Area Of The System To Another And To Measure How Successful We Are In That Effort. Finally, This Is A Chance For Us To Test Our Options For 2026 And Allow Us The Opportunity To Explore How We Might Want To Approach Managing Water Age. A Little Bit Of Source Water History And Background. As I'm Sure You Know, Our Two Sources, The Portland Water Bureau And The Joint Water Commission Are Similar, Yet There Is One Important And Challenging Distinction, And That Is Disinfection. Portland Uses Chloramines, Specifically Monochloramine, While JWC Uses Free Chlorine. In The Early Years Of The JWC Supply, The Two Sources Were Kept Separate, But Since The 2000s, They Have Been Blended. The Result Of Blending These Two Sources Is The Backside Of The Curve In The Figure On The Right. As We Move Beyond A Chlorine-to-Amonia Ratio Of 5 To 1, We See Monochloramine Converting To Dye And Trichloramine And Then Eventually Breakpoint. This Results In Taste And Odor Complaints From Customers And A Loss Of Residual In Certain Areas Of The Distribution System. To Better Understand Our System Water Quality, Data Improvements Have Been Made Over The Years. There Were Some Limitations To Overcome. Improvements Were Made. In 2005, Water Quality Staff Began Capturing Comprehensive System Data In Excel. However, This Data Was Geared More Towards Single Analysis And Compliance. In 2017, All The Data Was Cleaned Up And We Changed To An Excel Format That Was More Geared Towards A Broader Analysis. The Benefit Of This Was The Understanding Of The System Was No Longer Stuck In Our Heads And We Could Quantify The Trends That We Had Previously Observed In The Data. We Were Able To Plot Water Parameters Over Long Periods Of Time For Individual Sample Stations And We Could Also Analyze Seasonal Trends For Single Sites Or Even Entire Pressure Zones. The Time Series Approach Was Useful, But It Was Not The Full Picture. It's More Of A Keyhole Than A Window. We Found It Difficult To Infer Data Between Two Sample Stations. It Was Also Hard To Visualize Systemwide Trends Over Time. And When We Started Plotting Multiple Sites And Multiple Parameters On The Same Axis, It Got Messy Very, Very Quickly. Despite Some Of The Limitations I Just Mentioned, You Might Be Wondering How We Are Implementing These Data Improvements. We Can Pull All Of The Data That Exists For Each Of The Individual Sample Stations In The Distribution System. So Each One Of Those Red Dots On The Map Is An Individual Sample Station. However, As You Can See, It Is Messy And Hard To Discern Much Beyond Some Interannual Trends When You Look At The Plot On The Top. We Can Also Look At An Aggregate Of The Same Data For An Entire Pressure Zone. Here We Have Plotted The Seasonal Quartile Values Along With Minimum, Maximum And Medium Values For Historical Chlorine Residual And The 385 Pressure Zone. This Is Valuable Information, But It's Difficult To Determine The Drivers Of The Trends We See Based On This Type Of Plot Alone. We Realized That We Needed To Be Able To Visualize Our Data Over A Wide Area And This Is Where The Modeling Effort Comes Into Play. Water Quality And Operations Staff Determined The Best Approach Was To Start This Effort By Setting Water Quality Targets Specifically With Respect To Chlorine Residual. A Data-Driven Approach Made Sense, But There Were Limitations. Our Data Was Retrospective. Plotting Data Didn't Help Us Visualize It Over A Wide Area And It Was Hard To Track Incremental Changes Over Time. Ultimately, We Realized We Needed An Approach That Displayed The Data With Respect To Time And Space. The Answer We Were Looking For Was GIS. The Interpolation Approach. GIS Interpolation Is A Tool That's Commonly Used In The Fields Of Geology And Meteorology To Model Subsurface Environments, Elevation And Rainfall At Points Where Values Are Unknown, But It Can Be Used For Any Geographic Point Data. Interpolation Uses Data To Calculate Unknown Values And It Assumes That Points Close To One Another Are More Similar Than Those Far Apart. Here's The Data That We Used For The Interpolation. Once Again, That's The Map Of Our System With All Of Our Sample Stations. It Consisted Of 139 Sample Stations That Span The Entire District. Sampling Is A Joint Effort Between Water Quality And Operations Staff. However, The Bulk Of This Work Is Done By The Operations Staff. Chlorine And Conductivity Data Are Collected From Each Station On A Weekly Basis. We Try To Keep The Collection Period As Consistent As Possible. The Typical Collection Period Was Three Days And This Was An Opportunity To Implement A Focus Effort Performed By Single-Unit Field Resources During The COVID-19 Response. So This Is The Conceptual Model Of The Process That We Use To Create The Model That I Will Show You Soon. The Data Collected From The System Is Sent Over To The GIS Staff In The Geo Processing Step. The GIS Staff Run The Data Through A Method That Performs Radially Symmetric Calculations At Each Of The Sample Points To Estimate Values Between Known Data Points. It's Important To Note This Figure On The Bottom. This Is What We Use To Bound The Interpolation By Barriers. We Use Pressure Zones To Ensure That The Model Isn't Breaking Any Rules With Respect To Hydraulics. After Geo Processing, We End Up With An Interpolated Surface, Which Is Basically Just An Image Or Collection Of Pixels That Contain All Of The Encoded Data. We Can Then Visually Enhance This Image To Extract The Encoded Information. Before I Move On To The Results, We Should Spend A Minute Talking About How We Ended Up With The Current Iteration Of Our Model. We Certainly Didn't Get It Right On The First Try. We Started By Using Our Monthly RTCR Compliance Data, But This Gave Us A Model That Had Too Many Errors. We Tried Again With Data That Was Limited To A Two-WEEK Period, But It Still Wasn't A Good Model. After The First Two Attempts Failed, We Asked Ourselves What Went Wrong. In Version 1, We Failed Because Our System Is Too Dynamic. There's Too Much Change In A Month Long Period. Version 2 Didn't Have Enough Data And Two Weeks Was Still Too Long Of A Time Period. COVID-19 Gave Us An Opportunity To Change Our Approach By Leveraging Our Single-Unit Resources. We Were Able To Collect The Maximum Amount Of Data In A Short Timeframe And We've Been Modeling The System On A Weekly Basis Since March 23rd. So How Well Did The Model Match What We Already Know About The System? We Used Chlorine Residual And Conductivity As Proxies For Overall Water Quality And Source Tracing. We Applied Color ramps To The Model Which Facilitated Visual Interpretation Of The Results. Finding The Right Colors Can Be Tricky, So If Anyone Would Like To See Our Results In A Different Color Ramp, It Would Be Happy To Make Those Available To You. For The Chlorine Residual, We Wanted To Examine Areas Where Residual Was Low Or Decreasing, So We Applied A Maximum Value Of 1.2 mg/L To This Map. Anything Above That Value Will Be Shown In Blue Violet. Yellow Is The Mid Range Where We Are Approaching 0.6 mg/L And Anything In Orange Is Approaching Zero And Should Be Considered An Area Of Concern. For The Conductivity Or Blending, We Took A Slightly Different Approach And Did Not Limit Values. Rather, We Used The End Points Of Our Color Ramp To Represent 100% Of Either JWC Or Portland Water. The Yellow Is 100% JWC, The Blue Violet Is 100% Portland, And The Pink And Red Areas Represent Blending Zones. Here We Have An Example Of Where We Modeled Two Consecutive Weeks. You'll Notice How The Yellow And Orange Reasons Of The Chlorine Residual Map Correspond To Red And Pink Areas On The Blending Map. I'll Give You A Second To Take That In. And Here, We Looped All The Models Together And Created An Animation That Allows Us To Visualize System Dynamics Between The End Of March And The Beginning Of June. Again, I Will Give You A Few Moments To Take This In.
Tara?
Yes?
This Is Todd Sanders.
Hi.
You Said Radial Interpolation Technique Which Would Insinuate Inverse Distance. Is That The Methodology You Used For The Interpolation?
It's Similar To The Inverse Distance Weighted Method, But It's Actually, It's Called Kerneling With Absolute Barriers, But calculation-wise, They're Very Similar.
Have You Tried Other Interpolation Techniques Or Why Did You Settle On Kerneling?
Because We Could Use The Absolute Barriers, But We Are Certainly Open To Exploring Other Interpolation Methods. This Just Happened To Be One That I Had Used Previously In Geology And That I Understood.
It's Usually The Case With Interpolation, Right? I Know This One.
It Was The Safe Choice For Me.
Sure. Understood And Respected. Are You Using ArcGIS?
Yes, We Are.
So In The Spatial Toolbox, There's Another Method Called Natural Neighbor. And I'm Going To Suggest That You Take A Look At That. The Reason Is Because Of My Experience In Using Interpolation Techniques To Create Surfaces From Irregularly Spaced Data, Which Probably Is An Exact Representation Here. And One Of The Reasons For That Is, Is If You're Looking At The Figure On The Left Right Now, When You See The White Form, And I Apologize, I Can't Quite See What Pressure Zone That Is.
That's In The 385.
385. So On 385, On The Far Eastern Edge, You See Where It Goes White? Like Right... Keep Running. There's Some White On The Far Eastern Edge. There's A Bunch Of White On The Far Eastern Edge, But There's No Data Points There. That's An Artifact Of Your Interpolation Technique.
Yeah, And That's Something That We Have Noticed That We Need To Address. So I Will Certainly Look Into The Method That You Recommended. Do You Have A Recommendation For The Number Of Neighbors To Allow It To Interpolate From?
So What I Would Recommend Is That You Start Really Wide And Then Tighten It Up Until These Artifacts Disappear. And What You're Going To End Up With Is Probably Some Blank Data Around The Edges, Because I'm Also Going To Assume That You Interpolated Via Each Pressure Zone. That's Why You Have The Brake Lines?
Yeah, We Use Barriers To Make Sure That When The Interpolation Ran, It Wasn't Interpolating In A Direction That Wasn't Consistent With The Hydraulics Of Our System.
Yeah, So By Pressure Zone, Or If You Will, If I Can Put It In Quotes, By Polygon.
Correct, Yeah.
Yeah, So I Would Start Out As Wide As Possible With The Natural Neighbor And Then Bring It In Until You Lose That Artifact On The Far Eastern Edge. And You'll Probably End Up With Some Whiting Along The Perimeter, But That Would Be More Conservative If You're Planning On Using This Data For Something Else.
Sure. Yeah, We Will Certainly Look Into That. I'm Sure That Our GIS Staff Is Going To Love Me Because These Interpolations Typically Take Like Eight To Nine Hours To Run.
I Know. They're So Much Fun.
Yeah, So They're Going To Like To Hear That.
I Apologize, But I, Yeah, I Mean, I Have A Long History Of Doing This Very Thing That You're Talking About. And By Far, If You Want To Look Into The Background For It, The Professor's Name Is Dave Watson And He's Out Of Australia. And He's Been Working With Interpolation Techniques For Geology For, You Know, 30 Years. So DF Watson Is His Name. And He's Got A Number Of Articles, Why The Veroni Polygon Methodology In The Natural Neighbor Is The Most Conservative Solution On The Interpolation Technique, Especially Once You Start To Extrapolate, Which Is What You're Getting On The Far Eastern Edge Of That 385 Zone. It's Really An Extrapolation. So How Do You Minimize The Error Associated With That Edging? That's Just, Yeah. Thanks For Putting It Out There.
Appreciate That. Certainly Appreciate The Input. We Want To Make This As Good As We Can Make It And So Trying A Different Interpolation Method Is Certainly On The Table.
Thank You.
So Dr. Sanders, You Get Gigantic Nerd Marks, Just Saying.
Well, If You Want To Hear The Whole Story Behind It, I Can Tell You The Entire History.
No, No. I Don't Want To Hear Anymore. I'm Full To The Top.
But It Made Me Feel So Good To Be Able To Talk About Something I Finally Understood.
Well, I'm Glad One Of Us Does.
And I Appreciate Tara For Understanding Me.
Sure, Yeah, And I Look Forward To Sharing Another Version Of It With You. I'm Excited To See How They Look Side By Side.
Thank You For Listening.
Yeah, Of Course. So I'm Going To Go Ahead And Move On. So How Can We Use The Model? Identifying Areas Where We Can Improve Water Quality Is Number One. Identifying Areas That Experience Frequent Swings In Chemistry Is Another. We Can Use It To Make System Adjustments And Monitor The Effects. We Can Also Use It To Develop A Better Understanding Of How Our System Changes Over Time And Hopefully We Can Use It To Improve The Accuracy Of The TVWD Hydraulic Model. And As Dr. Sanders Pointed Out, This Model Is Not Without Limitations. We Need To Take A Closer Look At Areas Where Pressure Zones Are Connected By PRVs. We Need To Address Directional Bias When The Data Is Spars. We Don't Want To Extrapolate Too Much. We Need To Figure Out If The Transitional Areas Of The Model Are Truly Well-Defined Contours And We Currently Don't Account For External Factors Such As Consumption Or Water Temperature. So How Do We Improve The Model? We Examine Areas That We Think May Be Questionable. We Find Ways To Add More Data Where It Is Needed. We Identify Ways To Integrate Factors That Impact Chlorine Residual And Blending. And Most Importantly, We Share Information And Ideas Across The Engineering And Operations Department To Help Improve Water Quality. And Finally, The Next Steps, Task Force Development. A Task Force Of Water Quality, System Ops, Engineering And GIS Staff Has Been Assembled And A Project Charter Is Being Developed. The Objectives Are To Improve Water Quality And Chlorine Residual, Develop Procedures For Deliberately Moving Water From Entry Points To All Points Of The System, Any Water, Anywhere, To Plan For And Practice The Portland Water Bureau To WWSS Conversion. Any Questions?
Tara, Have You Looked At Running Low-Pass Filters Across Your Data Before Using It As Well?
No, We Haven't. We Just Used The Raw Data. This Was, I Mean, Granted, Our Third Iteration Of This Model, But We're At The Point Now Where We Want To Start Honing In And Trying To Take Some Tactical Steps To Improve The Model. So I Will Make A Note Of That.
Yeah, I Mean, I Think You Might Even Be Able To Just Do Easily Something Like A Time Domain Filter, Like Just A, As Paul Would Call It, A Rolling Average, As You Would Call It, A Boxcar Filter.
Okay, I Will Note That And I Will Make Sure To Present It To The Task Force As A Suggestion.
So This Is Carrie Pack, And I Just Wanted To Interject Not So Much On The Technical Side, But On The Reason We Brought This To You Tonight As The Department Meet Report. And That Is, You Know, You've Heard Me Talk About Different Aspects Of Engineering And Operations As A Department. We Are The Biggest Department In The District And We Have Specialists And Experts In Spinning From, From, You Know, The Best Mechanics Out There All The Way To Obviously People Like Tara, Who Are Expert In Water Quality Modeling And Statistical Analysis And A Span. And I Just Wanted To Bring To The Board To Let You Guys Get A Snip In How We Work Together As A Team. As Tara Mentioned That We Put Together A Task Force Made Up Of Operations Crews Who Are Actually Helping Us Not Only Understand How The System Operates In Terms Of Maintaining The Water Quality, But Also Are Actually Taking Samples Out There. And As We Indicated Before, This, We've Really Taken Opportunity Of Single Work Group That The COVID-19 Response Timing Taking An Advantage Of That Opportunity To Collect This Data, Because These Type Of Data Don't Just Come About And It Doesn't Just Happen On A Regular Day-To-Day Basis. So It's Been Really Watching Staff Come Together Not Only From A, You Know, Level Of know, level of expertise that you've just witnessed, but also from the working together as a team and, and to develop something that we haven't been able to do in-house in the past. So I hope that today's, tonight's presentation brought a little bit highlight to, to you all in terms of, again, the span of areas of practice that the engineering and operations department have. So, thank you. I want to thank Tara for, Tara for putting this together. It's been, yes, yes ma'am.
I just wanted to thank you. I have appreciated the approach you've taken with your department reports and letting us know in a little bit more depth what all the various disciplines your, your department covers and, and what they're up to. It's, it's been a real nice, kind of deeper dive into some of those specialties.
Hi, this is Jim Don. I found the presentation to be very interesting and very helpful, actually. I am rewarded, I guess. I'm looking, I'm searching for the word, but it's not there, that we're not trying to segregate the systems from Portland and Joint Water Commission, but that we're allowing blending to take place, which, which I think is a very good thing. It allows for a more robust system.
Thank you, Commissioner Don.
So, are there... Sorry?
We are done with our department report. Thank you.
So, okay. Are there other things from the CEO's report?
Nothing more. All I just, very proud of our staff.
As you should be. They are swell folks. So we will move along then to commissioner communications and reports of meetings attended. And I'm just going to go first, because my name starts with B. So there you are. On May 28th, I attended the Westside Economic Alliance for the annual mayor's forum, and that was, that was a real interesting meeting, as always. All, pretty much all of the mayors talked about their response to the COVID crisis. And Cornelius, in particular, commented that fully 17% of their customers cannot pay their water bill. And that, I found that really sad and alarming for Cornelius. On the 2nd of June, I attended the TVWD work session where we discussed the Willamette Water Supply System, system development charges, and changes, upcoming changes to the rules and regulations that you'll hear more about tonight. On the 9th, I attended an agenda planning session with our CEO and the Vice President of the Board, Commissioner Schmidt, and then, of course, tonight's meeting. So that is it for me. And continuing with my alphabetical thing, Commissioner Don, how about meetings you've attended?
Yes, I attended the, the work session. I attended a meeting, the Westside Economic Forecast in early June, where the discussion was sort of, where do we go from here? And then tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Moving to Commissioner Duggan, your meetings attended.
I also attended the work session on June 2nd. On June 3rd, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium Board Meeting, where we had a budget update. The staff of the consortium is reporting that they estimate there's going to be approximately a 3% reduction in the overall budget, just because of the fact that COVID is impacting their programs. There are not going to be as many in-person opportunities, such as attending the fairs and other community gatherings that aren't going to happen this summer. And also, the furlough program that Portland has going with certain members of their staff will result in basically a 3% reduction that will be applied back to the dues that will be paid by the consortium members. But it's just the fact that COVID. We got other program updates, and then we had a roundtable talking about the effects of COVID on our individual agencies. And I was able to present, thanks to staff's help, a very nice slide, PowerPoint presentation of all the great things that our staff is doing and that you're very familiar with already. One point of note from the other agencies that reported, and they were very similar to ours, but from Oak Lodge, the representative from Oak Lodge, a guy named Mark Nudson, reported that initially, Oak Lodge Water Services were looking at a 3% rate increase this year for both their sanitary and their, their water programs. But they adjusted the program, adjusted things that they're going to be doing, and they are now just proposing a half percent rate increase. And that half percent of new revenue is going to be devoted entirely to their customer assistance, customer emergency assistance program, because they estimate that they are, are going to have customers, many customers that will not be able to, to pay their bills due to COVID. Moving on, I attended the WWSS meeting on the 4th, which was our regular monthly meeting. And obviously, we approved the baseline 5.2 work plan for the coming year. On the 16th, I had a meeting with our staff and the WWSS staff to talk about ancillary projects and in preparation for the July meeting and going forward. And then I have to report tonight's meeting. And that's it for the month of June for, for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. And it sounds like Oak Lodge is following our sterling example with regard to their customer emergency assistance program. Commissioner Sanders, your report on meetings attended.
Thank you. I attended the same early June meeting, June 2nd meeting with everybody else with regards to our beginning of the month meeting. Then on the 9th, I attended our Willamette River Water Coalition meeting with our partners from Sherwood, Toowallatin, and Tigard. In that meeting, Joel Carey gave us two presentations. The first one was with regards to the Army Corps reallocation plan, and it had been signed by all the important signatories. However, there was a legal challenge in process from Water Watch Oregon. So that was up in the air at the moment. That had been a recent, I don't know the legal term for it, that had come about recently from Water Watch. So that's being addressed now. The second one had to do with water right permitting with Oregon Water Resources, and had to do with just the reporting mechanism and the way that it's done within the state, and I think specifically online, and the challenge of breaking apart water use at the WIF per water right permits with our partners, Hillsborough, Tigard, TVWD, City of Wilsonville, et cetera. And from, from the discussion that Joel presented to us, it sounds like TVWD is having to allocate some time within the organization to work with the state on its method of reporting. And I guess there's more to come on that, but it was just more of a, something of time, taking more time than it was a disagreement or something that would put any kind of delay in anything with regards to our future use of the Willamette River. And then my third thing is today's meeting.
All right. Thank you, sir. And Commissioner Schmidt, your report.
Okay, this is going to sound like a broken record. I attended the work session and also the meeting with you and Tom about reviewing the agenda and tonight's meeting.
That's a perfectly fine broken record. I appreciate it. So do we have any other topics to be raised by commissioners?
None here.
Commissioner Schmidt, my understanding is that you might be interested in raising at some future date, the, a response to the customer who wrote in about his concern that we don't have low income rates or lifeline rates?
Well, I was just, I was just curious as to whether or not we could have any mechanism to accommodate people like that.
I'm going to ask Paul to address it. I will say, just on my experience, it's a difficult one to capture, because as President Bagnell just explained, that it's a, typically those can be captured with like lifeline rates, but those have their own issues and complexities. And I'm going to ask if Paul could weigh in a little bit on that.
Tom, this is Jim Don. Can I weigh in on this? The last time the rate advisory committee met, which was now going on three years ago, they recommended absolutely against lifeline rates, because all it was, was a shift of revenue sources to others. And they recommended that instead, we look at other mechanisms to deal with situations in the letter that we got. So now I'll shut up and turn it over to Paul.
Well, but I would like to weigh in too. And thank you, Commissioner Don, for reminding me about the rate advisory committee, because I think, as, as most folks know, I have some deep-seated concerns about providing a bunch of rate relief to a whole class of customers who may or may not need it. And I really like a targeted effort. And I also have very deep concerns about changing our rate structure at the same time we are putting in a new CIS system. I just, you know, I don't, I don't have any objection at all to, to bringing this up at a work session and yakking about it, but it's, it's got some real issues.
Well, this is what I'm hoping to learn by this. I'm not sure it warrants any much discussion at a work session, considering what people have said this evening. So I'll drop it. Thank you.
Well, I, I, one of the things I would favor, and I, Paul, forgive me, I keep not letting you talk, but, but one of the things I would be really interested in is something that our CEO has mentioned twice before, which is trying to find ways to add more funding to our customer emergency assistance program, because that is very, very targeted, and it's means tested. And those are important issues to me, and I think important issues to our customers.
So this is Paul. I'll step in here now, but certainly yield if there are more comments or questions. We are working right now on, as part of the financial response team, we are looking at the customer emergency assistance program and looking at how we can have other assistance that is very targeted. As President Bagnell mentioned, lifeline rates is very diffuse, which means you can't give much of a benefit to those who truly need it, because some of the benefit is going to those of us that can frankly afford our water bills. So we will, we are working right now on, on that program. We've had discussions with service providers that provide service for the LIHEAP program, which is the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program, to see if we can't use some of their technology and some of their policies to streamline the administration of, of an enhanced program. And we are looking at ways of increasing the funding for the Customer Emergency Assistance Fund that we use to fund the Customer Emergency Assistance Program. So we do want to bring this to the board in a work session, to talk about our, our proposals or what we've learned, to make sure that we get adequate policy input, because this is ultimately really a policy question. It's not strictly a technical question. So we want to bring that to you in a work session and work out some of these details and get a proposal before you. So this is all happening right now as we speak. We had, as you mentioned, the rate advisory committee, our intent was to do this after the CIS project was complete and stabilized. And then we decided to have a, some sort of a pandemic in the middle of this. So now we're weighing the cost of waiting versus the cost of moving with something that might be an interim measure more quickly. So stay tuned. I'll probably have more to say at our July regular meeting, when I give the report on the financial response, and then the future work session.
Thank you. Does that work for you, Commissioner Schmidt?
It does. Thank you.
Chair Bagnell, could I, could I add something real quick on that, just to close it out?
Sure.
So I just wanted to make you aware that our communications staff did reach out to the customer that we got the email from and explained everything and related to, the investments related to the WWSP. And he very much appreciated the call back. So I think, I think that helped. But just so, just so you know, we did respond.
I'm glad to hear it. And, and you know, that, as you probably all are sick of hearing, but that, again, is one of my kind of pet peeves, is that that letter to me clearly read as the letter to someone, letter from someone who is looking at his total bill, not just his water bill. And, you know, God, we can't control what Clean Water Services does. And I understand and sympathize with his concerns that their fixed and base charges are really high, and that you have limited, very limited ability to affect your sewer and stormwater bill by reducing your water consumption. But that's not within our control. So that's frustrating.
Hello, this is Todd. I'm hesitant to ask this. I may get my head chopped off. Have we ever looked at the cost of service based on location? And those people that receive that service in terms of their financial demographic, I guess I'll be explicit. It costs a lot of money to pump water uphill to the people who have nice houses on the top of the hill, and they get to pay the same price as the people that live at the bottom of the hill.
And those of us who live at the top of the hill don't like that idea at all.
I know. And you're also the ones with the most political strength.
But no, that, I, it's, it's, it's not something that TVWD has looked at in the past, unless, Paul, you've been doing some stuff behind my back. But it's, those kinds of rate structures have their own challenges.
And this is Jim Don. In the early 70s, the Portland Water Bureau had a system where the more it costs to serve you, the more you paid. And it turned out to be an administrative nightmare. You know, if we'd adjust a pressure-reducing valve, it changed the zones in which people were paying. And quite frankly, at the time, it just was an administrative nightmare. So at that point, Portland went to one cost. at that point, Portland went to one cost for the whole system. And I have as many pressure zones as we have and as many pump stations as we have, I think it would be a very similar kind of nightmare. But let's, we can look at it and see where it goes. But you're right. The people on top of the hill have nice views, and maybe we should charge them for that in our water rates. I'm being facetious.
Thank you for the insight, Jim. I knew it was a sticky wicket to ask the question, but I guess I'm gonna run for governor someday, so I wanted to ask the question.
Well, good on you. So have we beat this to death? Can we move on?
Please.
Paul's got my vote.
Alrighty. The public comment, that means we are to the public comment portion of the agenda. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the Board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the regular agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on each agenda item as it is presented. Do we have any persons who would like to comment? Okay, I counted to five. I heard nothing. So we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any Board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the Board has approved those items which do not require discussion. You know, I can't remember that we've ever had anybody separate any of these things since Richard went off the Board. That's just a sidebar comment. Tonight, we have two items on the consent agenda. The first is to approve the May 20, 2020, regular meeting minutes, and the second is to approve the June 2, 2020, work session minutes. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Dick. I so move.
This is Jim Doan. I second.
Thank you. Commissioner Schmidt has moved and Commissioner Doan seconded. So if the district recorder would please provide a roll call vote, we can move forward.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. It is unanimous, and the motion passes. Turning to the business agenda, the first item we have is to consider approving a motion to read by title only the draft ordinance amending and restating the rules and regulations for the use of the district's water system, and receive oral testimony or written comments, and direct that the ordinance be brought back for a second reading and adoption at the July 15, 2020 board meeting. And we have a staff report from our chief legal counsel, Clark Belfer, please.
Thank you, Chair Bagnall. So as you referenced earlier, we have a follow-on from the work session discussion that we had back on June 2, reflected in the minutes you just approved. And what we're doing here tonight, as you just said, we're having the first reading of the ordinance, which is really to amend our rules and regulations. And our rules and regulations are the rules by which we allow folks to use our water system. And for the most part, our rules have been in great shape. In fact, I'll say that, not for the most part. Our rules are in great shape, but we're always looking for ways to tune them up. And so what you have before you today is a relook at the rules to see if we maybe could make some definitional clarifications, if we should clarify some other things. But we also wanted to take a good look at our line extension policy, which is Section 19. And our line extension policy really comes into play when typically a developer wants to extend our system, build it at that person's expense, and then donate those assets to us. But in exchange, while we get the benefit of the growth of the system, in exchange, that person says, and the law essentially compels it, that we need to give that person an opportunity to gain reimbursement of a portion of the cost, an equitable portion of the cost, from those other users who could benefit by that line. And so we were looking at that, and we decided, staff has decided, that we need a little bit more flexibility in how we allocate that equitable cost in terms of direct benefit from that line that may be constructed and indirect benefit. And so the changes that you see in the ordinance get to that, to give staff flexibility in how to calculate the charges, the methodology that we may use. Equally important is the procedural component of that, because when we do that, and we don't do it too often, but when we do this, there's going to be what you would call benefited properties, those properties that could benefit from connecting to this line extension, if they do it within 10 years, from completion of that line extension. In looking at that, we thought that we needed a little bit more robust process for the public to receive notice of the pending potential charge if they connect at their voluntary election. And also to provide a process for this Board to hear the matter and determine if changes should be made. So this really has both substantive and procedural changes. But we think that it provides a fair process and gives staff the flexibility to structure a methodology and designation of benefited properties in a way that is equitable and allows us flexibility to make sure that there's a fair result for everybody. So with that, I will entertain questions. And then, as the district recorder outlined, and as you did, Chair Bagnall, we have a pending motion to read by title only, and you will see this matter back next month for second reading.
Well, this is one of those things I never thought I'd hear myself say, but I actually appreciate that there, the addition of some formal process to this, because I think that when you bind potential property owners to something that goes out 10 years, it's really kind of good to have a hearing and a formal process. Other comments or questions from commissioners?
Chair Bagnall, I would like to add one thing. And that is, we, one of the groups that is primarily impacted by this is the Home Builders Association, and we did provide them with a separate notice of these pending actions. To date, we've heard nothing from them.
Cool. Well, I appreciate that extra outreach. As I said, I heard Dick say he doesn't have any questions. Anybody else? In that case, do I have a motion and a second to read by title only the draft ordinance?
So moved. Sorry, Jim.
Go ahead.
I'll just say, Jim Duggan, I so move that we approve the draft ordinance to be read by title only as presented by staff.
And this is Jim Doan, and I'll second.
So it has been moved by Commissioner Duggan and seconded by Commissioner Doan, District Recorder. Will you please provide a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. The motion passes. I really need a gavel at home. I don't have one. So at this point, I'd like to invite staff to read the ordinance title into the record.
I will do so. Ordinance number 01-20, an ordinance amending and restating rules and regulations for the use of the district's water system.
Thank you. And now, apparently, we need another motion, which is to direct staff to bring back the ordinance for a second reading and adoption at the July 15, 2020 board meeting.
This is Dick. I so move.
Todd Sanders, second.
Moved by Commissioner Schmidt, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. District Recorder, will you please provide a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. Second item on our business agenda is to consider adopting Resolution 11-20, which is a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the Tuollet and Valley Water District and the City of Beaverton for emergency water use. The staff report, again, from our chief legal counsel, Clark.
Thank you, Chair Bagnall. I think we have a single presentation item for you in terms of an aerial of this. Tim, can you put that up? And there it is. So, thank you.
The magic of technology. For everyone but you.
Right. You're right. Okay. So this is an exhibit to the agreement. And if you recall, in 2018, we entered into a long-term agreement with City of Beaverton regarding provision of water service. And part of the provisions of that agreement included the ability of Beaverton to withdraw areas within the current city boundaries south of the Sunset Highway, and essentially then have a choice to allow us to continue to provide service to those properties on what we call direct service, to allow us to wheel water service into assets of the City of Beaverton, or that Beaverton could elect to separate the system, that is, to separate these areas from our system, and there would be defined connection points at that point. But it would be Beaverton water being provided by Beaverton pipes to Beaverton residents. Our agreement also provides that in these circumstances, when they are going to make an election to separate the system, that they provide us notice, provide a plan. And they have done so for a portion of what we call Area 4. And Area 4 is also divided, or this portion of Area 4 is divided into two phases, and those show up on the map in the green color and the blue color. So Beaverton, though, in order to fully serve their properties, once they have completed their separation plan, is, it requires some supplemental water or some emergency water. The fact is, if there's an emergency event or a fire, at this point, because Beaverton still needs to construct other assets to separate, they don't have the ability to provide fire flow. So what this agreement does is to augment our existing agreement to provide for fire flow and emergency water in these withdrawn and separated areas for a period of five years, or it could be renewed for another five years, in order to allow them time to complete other connections, I think primarily to the North Transmission Line. So this agreement really provides for a couple of things, that there will be an emergency connection near the Fred Meyer Shopping Center just west of 158th on Walker Road, and you can see the little red box there. And also, if the Jenkins Road pipeline of Beaverton's that connects to that area goes down for some reason, that we would agree to provide supplemental water to these new, these city residents until they're back up and running, and we would get compensated for it. The compensation formula is in Exhibit B, and it is something that our finance staff worked on very diligently with Beaverton Finance Staff. So we're compensated for providing these services. This is something that's very near and dear to the city. They have this scheduled for their council on July 7, I believe. And so we thought that the timing is right, where we have the document ready to go, and we might as well go ahead and approve it. So that's why it's on your agenda tonight. And with that, I would entertain questions, but also you have Tom, Carrie, and Paul available to answer other questions. So feel free to call on them, too.
I would just like to say that Exhibit B, oh, gosh, I've got that echo again. Exhibit B was a delightful trip down rate-making memory lane for me, and thank you, Paul. It was very clear.
Clark, this is Jim Doan. I really appreciate the graphics. That's kind of a unique experience in your presentations.
Thank you. I was so noted for the future.
Other questions or comments from commissioners? If not, do I have?
Jim Duggan here, I just wanted to say that I, too, really appreciated Exhibit B, and then also the financial numbers and the cost of service determination and estimated reimbursement for providing the service. I think staff did an excellent job, and I really am pleased with the amount of thought and detail that went into establishing what would be the true cost of service. So thank you.
Yeah, I think that sets a really important precedent for future agreements, and I'm really glad that you all, all of staff, stood your guns and went with a cost-of-service approach. So do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 11-20, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between Tuollet and Valley Water District and the City of Beaverton for emergency water use?
This is Todd Sanders. I so move.
This is Dick. I will second.
Commissioner Sanders has moved. Commissioner Schmidt has seconded. So would the district recorder please provide a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. That sounds unanimous, and the motion passes. We do have a third item on our agenda, which is to consider action items related to the executive session if needed. Staff report? Or should I use the suggested motion?
Well, Chair Bagnall, I'm glad to give this a very brief staff report for the public. So as part of our Miller Hill Road ASR project, it became necessary to acquire a neighboring parcel of property owned by a person named Tim Gray. We couldn't come to a voluntary negotiated settlement with him, and we went ahead and filed a condemnation case, as we're authorized to do by law, although we never do that lightly. In this case, I'm pleased to report that late this afternoon, we were able to come to a settlement agreement with Mr. Gray to buy his entire parcel, which is approximately 1.6 acres, up on top of Cooper Mountain, and for the price of $850,000. So I would ask that the Board ratify this settlement, and we have a suggested motion. And from that motion, then we can proceed to close out and obtain title for the district.
Thank you very much, Clark. So do I have a motion and a second that the Board approve a settlement in the pending condemnation case with Tim Gray for $850,000, and direct the chief executive officer and legal counsel to prepare and execute all documents necessary to conclude the matter and vest title to the property in the district?
So moved. Jim Duggan?
Second, Jim Doan.
It's been moved by Commissioner Duggan, seconded by Commissioner Doan. District Recorder, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Doan?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner? Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. We have come to the end of our agenda, and there being no further business before the Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Bye.
Good night.